Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. I am Mayor Shannon Glover and I call our meeting to order. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's Declaration of a State of Emergency Due to the Novell Coronavirus, Executive Order 51 on March 12th, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This called meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the 26th day of January 2021 without a quorum present in the city council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council Ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each city council member is participating from their home or other remote location and I am in the city council chamber. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes? Mr. Barnes?
Present. I was trying to push the button. Present.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, present.
Mr. Woodard?
Present.
Mayor Glover?
Here. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a virtual called meeting on January 12th, 2021 and a virtual regular meeting on January 12th, 2021. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, we are in need of a motion?
With adoption.
Excuse me? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
The minutes are first. Yes, sir.
Could you please read our speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. While speakers have an opportunity to address council or matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We are under unfinished business, item number 21-17. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the caption of the resolution for council's consideration?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a youth permit, UP 20-10, to Breeden Investment Properties, Inc. to construct and operate not more than 60 units of multifamily housing at 700 Crawford Street and in conjunction therewith to deviate from certain standards applicable to the T6 sub-district of the D1 zoning district and/or the property which are specifically identified herein.
At this time, we will hear from the applicant on the follow-up information requested by city council. Madam Clerk, were there any speakers for this item?
Yes, sir. There are several. We have Ms. Lisa Murphy and she can introduce the others that are available for questions. Ms. Murphy?
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor, members of city council. Hopefully you can hear me for the record. My name is Lisa Murphy and I'm here tonight on behalf of Breeden Investment Properties. As Mayor Glover indicated at our last meeting, we received a series of questions and we wanted to be able to and are happy to have the opportunity to respond to you this evening. Hopefully, the clerk has circulated a spreadsheet that Breeden Construction, our Breeden Construction, put together showing some of the minority participation and local hiring in Portsmouth in the past several years. What I wanted to do was highlight the Lexington Place project, as you know, is under construction, Lexington Place Phase 1. That is a project in which Breeden is not the developer, but Breeden Construction Company is the general contractor. On that particular project, 21% of the subcontractors hired by Breeden Construction are certified as minority business enterprises, 17% are certified as women's business enterprises, and 22% are HUD Act Section 3 certified. Section 3 meaning those businesses that provide economic opportunities to low persons and businesses that do the same. In addition, on the Lexington Place Project Phase 1, 28% of the subcontractors representing nearly $2.9 million in contracts have been based right here in Portsmouth. We're confident that had Breeden tracked participation over the last five or so years when the Harbor Vista Phase 1 project began, the minority participation numbers would be much higher. Although Breeden Construction only recently started tracking minority participation in its construction contracts, we do know that over the last five years, 48 subcontract representing over $15.6 million have gone to Portsmouth-based businesses and subcontract. As we mentioned at the public hearing on the 12th, these same subcontractors, many of whom Breeden's developed close relationships with, will be included on the list invited to bid on the Harbor Vista Phase 2 construction project if you grant us the conditional youth permit this evening. The other question or series of questions we asked had to do with Breeden's investment or what Breeden gives back to the community itself. Obviously, the construction of the 60 additional apartment units will be in excess of $12 million, but you had asked us specifically what does Breeden do in the community. So at the corporate level, just to give you a sense of their contributions, Breeden has pledged $20,000 to the Portsmouth Police Department for vests for canines. In addition, each year for the last several years, Breeden has contributed $1,000 a year to the Portsmouth School Foundation. In addition, they have pledged $100,000 for the installation of artwork in the Crawford Street traffic circle right near existing Harbor Vista Apartments and Harbor Vista Phase 2. In addition, through staff at its Harbor Vista and Montgomery Square Apartments, Breeden has held toy drives for Toys for Tots and has held clothing drives for the homeless. So hopefully with that information, you can see Breeden's commitment not only to investing in the city of Portsmouth through acquiring the property that the city owns and developing it with high-end apartment community, a continuation of its very successful Phase 1, but also their continued contribution to the community by hiring Portsmouth-based businesses and involving minority women-owned business enterprises in HUD Act Section 3 certified businesses. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have, but we would respectfully request that you approve the request of youth permit so that Breeden can continue to invest and develop 60 new apartment units right next to Harbor Vista Phase 1.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Murphy, and thank you to the Breeden Organization. Are there any questions from my colleagues on council? Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Murphy? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion?
Mayor, before you do that, I have a speaker.
Okay, sorry.
Additional speaker. I'm sorry. Mr. Mark Adolde Giotrowski. Is he in? We have a lot of people in here. Mr. Mark Adolde Giotrowski. It doesn't look like he's on there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the members of council and neighbors. I recall that it was a point of pride for Mayor Wright that he was able to recruit the Breeden Organization to come to our city to build several developments here. And from what I've seen in downtown, each of the properties that the Breeden Company has developed has been attractive. It has brought additional people to the downtown area, which of course is good for business and it's good for our tax base. So I'm happy to see that they are continuing to have a presence in Portsmouth. And I think that turning this piece of non-performing real estate into a taxable piece of real estate is a plus for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Having none, then are we ready for the question here in terms of is there a motion from the floor?
Move adoption.
Second. Second.
Madam Clerk, are we ready for the roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Before the call, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes. In lieu of the fact that we do not have any information regarding what our plan is as far as developing that whole waterfront site and the land usage that's going to be associated with that, I think that whatever we do in moving forward, it has to be consistent with that land usage for the waterfront and tending that property. And at this time, we don't have that type of information as far as that waterfront development and how that will be consistent with the land uses of this property. And so I'm going to have to vote against it because of the inconsistent land usage possibility that exists until we have a development plan in place.
Well, understood, sir, but I would just say we do have a comprehensive plan for development for that corridor, which is on our Build One Portsmouth program. So I would ask that all my colleagues revisit the Build One comprehensive plan that is inclusive of our downtown corridor and that particular area as well. In addition to the Crawford Gateway Plan that we have developed, I think those create a desire of what we expect to go into those areas. But thank you for that information. Councilmember Woodard?
I do concur with Dr. Whitaker, Councilmember Whitaker. I think that piece of land is tied into the waterfront as well. Plans, I know you're saying it's in our Build One, but when they built Phase 1, the Vista, a real estate agent basically said that that was a disaster being that it was placed right across from a entertainment venue. And I think we need to look at that going forward with Phase 2 and seeing how that can tie into our plans going forward in the future for making that a bustling business district.
Well, thank you again for your comments too, sir. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Vice Mayor Barnes, do you have a comment, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, would you call for the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
No.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
No.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is denied by a vote of four, excuse me, three, four.
We have now moved to the city manager's report. Item 21-40. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $2,100 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2021 Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Were there any speakers registered for this item?
No, sir.
Councilmembers, is there any discussion on this item? Do we have a motion from the floor to move the item forward?
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please do the roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted 7-0.
The next item is item 21-41. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation in the amount of $100 from the Todd Water Baptist Women's Ministry and Educational Convention and Appropriating Said Funds to the FY 2021 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to support foster care families.
Madam Clerk, do we have any registered speakers for this item?
No, sir.
Councilmembers, is there any discussion amongst ourselves? Do we have a motion to consider this item?
Move for approval.
Madam Clerk, please do the roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Next item is item 21-42. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. Yes. An ordinance, one, accepting flood mitigation assistance grant funding in the amount of $200,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating the said amount into the FY 2021 Grant Fund and two, transferring $50,000 from the stormwater category of the FY 2021 Capital Improvement Fund budget to the FY 2021 Grants Fund to serve as the required local match for the flood mitigation assistance grant.
Move for approval.
Madam Clerk, do we have any registered speakers for this item?
No, sir. We do not.
Any discussion amongst my councilmembers? We need a motion for approval?
Move for approval. Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted 7-0.
We have now come to item 21-43. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $131,000 from the General Fund and assigned fund balance to the contractual line item of the FY 2021 General Fund operating budget for the Department of Engineering and Technical Services.
Madam Clerk, were there any registered speakers for this item?
No, sir.
Is there any discussion from the councilmembers?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go right. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Did you have a question, Dr. Whitaker?
I'll wait for the second.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Whitaker?
Just want to let the public know that this is the line item relating to the removal of the Confederate monument. And so these funds pertain to that if that's correct, that this is to make up for funds that were used for moving the Confederate monument.
Mr. Page, Dr. Whitaker, that is correct?
All right. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted 7-0.
We've come to new business and under boards and commissions, I believe that we have a question for Vice Mayor Barnes and Councilmember Dr. Whitaker. Are there any appointments to bring forward for council's consideration?
No. No. This item should be deleted.
Very good. So there are no items to bring forth at this time?
Not for boards and commissions, no.
Thank you very much. We've now come to items submitted by council. Councilmembers, do you have any items? Dr. Whitaker, you have this one, sir.
Thank you. I would just like to comment that today we saw newly elected President Biden sign a series of executive orders that dealt with racial justice and equity. And a comment that the president made was that as long as we have systemic racism in this country, that our souls will continue to be troubled. It's not a new concept that he is speaking of because we as those who have a heritage of enslavement and those who have been fighters against slavery and the perpetuation of the systemic racism that we see today have been troubled since 1619. And I say this and bring this up because the council that we have today, we have members on our council that are socially conscious about Portsmouth moving in a direction where old systems of systemic racism are not perpetuated by us. The policies, programs we put in place, the way that we vote and move forward, that it will have that type of perspective. Even on our boards and commissions that will be presenting projects to us, that they make sure that they take into account the fact that we are in a system that has for over 400 years has seen systemic racism and Portsmouth is not immune from that. And so I hope that as we move forward, that we don't just look at this from an economic perspective, but we look at it from a social justice perspective as we move to make the quality of life better for everyone. I think we've seen how this pandemic has had a disparate impact across race. We've seen the issues that have happened with the raid that was on the Capitol, the inconsistencies in justice. And I just want to make sure that the citizens understand that we're here to move forward in a direction of social and economic justice and we're not just here to rubber stamp things because they look good from a tax perspective, but yet it still leaves people out and it keeps us at the status quo. We didn't come up here to conform. We've come to transform in a way of equity and that which is right. And so I want to share that, Mr. Mayor, because you said as you ran for mayor that we're going to move in a bold and new direction. And that means we're going to have to do more than just coming together singing kumbaya. But we're going to have to pass some policies that are going to have to address systemic racism. And I hope this council is up to the task of doing that. And from what I've seen, I think we are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments from the members of council? Councilmember Battle?
Yes, I'd like to say that in the past, we've had a lot of problems with our employees not understanding that they need to be kind to our citizens. Excuse me, in reference to applications, a lot of our citizens haven't ever filled out certain applications and therefore they may stumble. But I'm asking you to be kind to these citizens and help them along. It's not about money and they pay you. That's not it. It's that you need to be respectful and kind because you are a public servant. And our men in uniforms in this city, you need to be kind as well. If you're passing citizens by, you should speak to them. Good morning. How are you? Things like this go a long way in getting the trust of the citizens. If you don't want to do that, take the uniform off. Then you don't have to speak. But as long as you have those uniforms and drive those vehicles, for all means, please be kind to my public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Battle. Are there any other councilmembers who have any items to submit by councilmembers? Well, since there are none, I will make a statement as well. To all of my colleagues, one thing that you need to understand and to the citizens of Portsmouth, when I ran for mayor and my tagline was a bold new direction, let me be clear what a bold new direction means. First of all, a bold new direction means fairness and equity and equal treatment for every citizen in the city of Portsmouth. Recognizing the challenges of folks in our community who look like- Recognizing the challenges of folks in our community who look like me and other people of color who have struggled with the things that we have struggled with in our environments is absolutely a concern, and it will be supported. I have spent my entire life supporting efforts of, and upliftment and making sure that equity and fairness is a part of everything I do. And I can assure each of my colleagues and the citizens of Portsmouth that I will conduct myself in a professional and a positive manner, looking at every citizen as valuable and important as we move forward in this bold new direction to create an opportunity where all of us are able to survive, thrive, and achieve. And I hope that you all will follow in that way as well. Mr. Pace, do we have any report on pending items?
Yeah, there are no pending items for tonight.
We have reached the point of our non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mark Adolde Giotrowski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor. I'm the members of council and neighbors. Mayor, I, uh, I appreciate your remarks, as I do those of Councilmember Whitaker in particular. Um... The city needs to acknowledge that all of its citizens have not been treated equitably uh, in the earliest days and to the present. And it should be the goal of everybody on this council and everybody in this city to recognize that, that we are neighbors and that we are linked together. Um... As Dr. King said, and I'm probably not quoting it verbatim, but it doesn't matter what boat we first came over on, we're all in the same boat now. And we need to row together. We need to row in the same direction. So I look forward to the mayor's leadership and, and to Councilmember Whitaker's steadfast, um, falling out of those, those things that are not right and trying to get us all going in the same direction, working together for the general good of, of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Members of, members of council, there are no additional speakers.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for, for participating this night, and I think it was a good meeting. This meeting is adjourned.